Think we're good. We are live on Zoom.
Okay. Hello and welcome to the Mount Lebanon Planning Board Meeting, Tuesday, April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, we'll have a call, uh, roll call. Our board members, Rebecca Griffith.
Here.
Uh, Dave Hornacek is not here. Neither is Clint Roundsfield, John Schrott.
Here.
Andrew George, myself, here. Municipal staff, we have Josh Scanlon from Gateway Engineering.
Here.
Ian McMeans, our planner.
Here.
Greg Wharton, our urban planning and sustainability coordinator. And our liaison, Steve Silverman from the commission. Uh, Marilyn Oberst Horner.
She usually attends online. I'm not sure if she's on Zoom or not.
Okay. Well, we'll statement on plan, uh, pub- no, okay. A statement of on public comments, the planning board will accept public comments with each agenda item. Please note that repetition of comments made by previous speakers is not necessary for them to be considered. If a group of residents shares an opinion, we suggest that you select a spokesperson. Public comments is not the appropriate time for prolonged debate or for personal comments about or questions directed to fellow residents, the board members, municipal staff, or any developer. In consideration of everyone's time, we encourage residents making public comments to refrain from repeating comments made by previous speakers. For Zoom participants, if you wish to comment during public comment agenda items, use the raise hand function. During the public comment agenda item, the chair will recognize you. When recognized, please be sure to unmute your line and announce your name and address for the record. If you have multiple or complicated comments, you are welcome to submit them to us in writing. We ask that you hold your remark remarks to five minutes and will let you know when your time is up. We appreciate your efforts to be respectful and ask that the audience refrain from any behavior that is disruptive or might intimidate free speech. Uh, with that, uh, we'll move on to our first agenda item, which is meeting minutes. Uh, do I have an approval of minutes from the March twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three meeting?
Rebecca Griffith, I make a, um, motion to approve the minutes from the March twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three Planning Board Meeting.
Uh, John Schrott, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. In old business, we have a request for recommend recommendation for final approval of a revised site plan. The municipality of Mount Lebanon owns the property located at twelve fifty Lindendale Drive, where the Public Works Facility is currently. In two thousand and seventeen, the p- planning board recommended and commission approved a revised site plan to the Public Works Facility to include additional storage facilities and structures. This revised site plan is requesting recommendation for final approval to redevelop the site by installing a fire training facility, which will be located in between the firing range and the Public Works Storage Garage. Uh, with that, to, uh, we have presentation. Done?
Hi, um, I'm Ryan Enoch with Gateway Engineers and, um, I'm here on behalf of me the municipality of Mount Lebanon and the Fire Department, um, for the formal application for the final site, um, approval of the amendment to the Mount Lebanon Department of Public Works Complex. I, at the last meeting, um, it was brought up about the existing landscaping, about Cedar Boulevard. Since then, we have gone back to the site and conducted a, a survey of the screening along Cedar. Um, that was conducted on March twenty-eighth. Um, at the time of the screening, the vegetation, uh, was still pretty bare. So we're recommending or proposing that we, uh, reevaluate in May, when the vegetation is established, so we can fully, um, I guess decisively, um, determine what is there and what needs to be replaced. Um, currently at the moment, we're proposing to replace the vegetation, the shrubs and trees located at the, the southern entrance of the DPW complex to screen where the proposed fire training facility will be. This will include seven or eight, um, trees, the deciduous and evergreens, provide additional screening at the entrance there where the training facility will be. Um, also that will include a number of shrubs that, um, haven't, haven't lasted since they were originally installed with the original department. Um, the construction of the DPW complex.
A lot of X's.
Yeah. So there's our initial evaluation, uh, there's a was about twenty to twenty-five percent loss of the vegetation that was planted there. Um, we believe it was mostly because of that existing slope. It's just hard to get things to establish. So, and there's certain, there were certain, um, plants that did better than others. So when we go and do these improvements, we're going to incorporate the ones that fared better versus the ones that didn't.
Uh, what, how long is the contractor responsible for replacement? Are those two thousand and seventeen, correct, or?
Yes.
So do they have a year? What is it?
I, I.
Years, year to the percent, maybe it's on that.
Yeah.
And was there a review at two years?
There, I, I'm not sure. I can't answer that question. I know at some point there was during the construction, there was a, a review, but I can't say where that, what happened with that.
And there was also some note about a lot of poisonous hemlock on that hillside. Is that there?
Uh, yes, I believe so.
Is that choking the year of the existing vegetation?
I think not to my knowledge. I think that was just something that was noted in the evaluation. Like I said before, I think it was more just getting the existing slope and getting those plants to establish on there.
Be an established maintenance program then for this, for any new plantings that would be put there, being sure that they survive?
Yeah, I mean, it would be the typical maintenance pro- program you would have, like the original, like the two-year maintenance bond for any installations.
To, uh, follow up, we had a letter in our packets, uh, from, um, Michael McCormick from Gateway Engineers. Um, he noted in that letter that, uh, the, there were follow-up inspections in, uh, July, two thousand and nineteen, September, two thousand and nineteen, and May, two thousand and twenty. Um, after the planting was completed in June, two thousand and nineteen. So, um, looks like they did like a one-month, four-month, and one-year inspection based on this letter. Since it is municipal property, maintenance on the site is done by municipal, uh, Public Works crews.
So who's going to be responsible for the replanting municipality or the contractor getting into work on that?
Um, I'd say it depends on, you know, what all is put in, because our Public Works crews, we have a forestry crew, they do have some ability to plant some things. Um, and it really depends on the total scope of work if we decide to do it in-house or if we decide to, um, contract it out. Um, I'd say both options are available to us, kind of depending on where things fall and what trees are being used and the work availability of our Public Works crews. Um, because, you know, there are some things that we have the ability to do but don't have the time to do. Um, because our forestry crew has three people on it and we maintain eleven thousand street trees. So, um, there's always a time crunch. So, um, it would kind of depend and just be a decision that the Public Works Director would make then as far as whether it would be done in-house or it would be outsourced.
Josh, do you have a letter to read?
Our letter was, um, sent out, uh, March, um, at the last meeting that letter was addressed. We have no, um, remaining comments on it.
Thank you.
So, Ryan, um, last time we were all together to talk about this, one of, there was a citizen's comment about creating an attractive nuisance, and there really should be some way to make sure that the facility is secured during off-hours. And I didn't see anything in the revised submission that was really addressing any of those concerns.
I want to, um, answer that.
So we have not met with the fabricator again, because every time we meet with the fabricator and change the plans, it costs us money. Uh, so we were waiting to get close to the end and see how this turned out. But, um, our, our idea is what, something we've seen at the State Fire Academy, what they do at the State Fire Academy is this set of stairs is actually on a swivel. And so the stairs stay up and they're locked in place. And then you're able to unlock them and bring the swivel, the stairs down. So again, as we mentioned last time, all the doors and windows, the windows are locked from the inside, doors would have a padlock. So really, the only place that anybody could really get on that is on this small land. And that would be our intent to secure anybody from the fire department building. And again, it would be sign, you know, signage certainly doesn't sound anything. It's not public property, so that people shouldn't be, be on that property in off-hours anyway.
What about the coloring of it? Um, because it's still red.
We, we did add some color. We tried to make it blend in a little bit more. Um, the only other thought, and I don't know if this will look good or bad, but we were thinking of doing the, the same brown color on the stairwell. Um, I don't know that that, that might make it look worse.
I think our, our issue is the submission indicated that it was going to be painted the red oxide.
Yeah, no, it won't be painted the red oxide. It's going to match everything on site. So that's our goal. Besides the yellow, we can't change the yellow railing because it's an OSHA requirement. But we want, we want it to kind of blend in and look like everything else down there. Yeah. It's a good song by the Grateful Dead.
And I know that, um, the letter has gone out to the residents. I've heard that it has been received by residents. Have we received any comments or were there any emails or anything about that?
Uh, I got one phone call from a resident on James Place, uh, just asking which of the two properties on the agenda their house was closer to, um, but did not raise any concerns with either application.
And we have posted the information on the Mount Lebanon Fire Department website, www.mtlfd.org. We weren't able to get it on the municipal website because they're in a transition, transition website, so it would cost a lot more money. But, um, if anybody wants to read about it and, and everything that we explained to you folks in the letter, um, and the FAQ that we put together for the Mount Lebanon Commissioners, all that information is available on the Fire Department website.
And when did these letters go out?
Uh, the ones that you got a copy of would have gone out what, last Tuesday, I think it was? It was about a week in advance of the meeting, I think. Monday or Tuesday? Yeah.
Do we have any public comments?
On the sign-in sheet, um, Mr. Good, was, was it, uh, sorry, I can't read your writing. Um, did you have a comment on this project or a different project? Or general? On, oh, on the, uh, okay. Oh, okay, okay, gotcha. All right. That'll be a general public comment for the end of the meeting. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure we got you at the right time. Okay, so then no public comments on the sign-in sheet.
Somebody on Zoom?
Uh, yeah, if you want to make a public comment on this on Zoom, please raise your hand. Okay, seeing none, I guess we have none on this.
Okay. Uh, do I have a recommended action?
I'm fraud. I move to recommend for final approval the revised site plan at twelve fifty Lindendale Drive conditioned upon the municipality addressing items required to be completed prior to final approval noted in the engineer's review letter of April twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three, along with addressing concerns about safety due to creating an attractive nuisance and specifying a paint finish consistent with the other structures in the Public Works Facility.
Andrew George, I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Uh, Rebecca Griffith, I vote no.
Okay, motion carries two to one. Uh, we'll move to new business. We have requests for preliminary approval and final and recommendation for final approval for a subdivision plan. Flashpoint Partners LLC has completed construction of two dwelling units at sixty-two Cedar Boulevard and is now proposing to subdivide the lot into two points zero seven acre individual lots as part of the fa- final phases of construction. Uh, do we have somebody representing the developer?
I don't see anyone from that here.
Okay. Do we have anything from the engineer?
Yes, we have a letter dated April twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three. It is proposing the, uh, partyball subdivision of this development. This is an R four multifamily mixed residential district, and this is a use by right. Um, our comments are generally related to drafting in nature. Um, and we do have comments relative to easements and to depict utility connections and, um, confirm whether or not easements are required. Summary of the letter.
Any comments from the board? I don't have any. Uh, if there are no public comments.
I have one comment on this. Uh, the, that's fine. Uh, the developer of this site, um, has a few outstanding, uh, engineering bills that they need to, uh, remit to the municipality. So I would recommend that the commission not grant final approval until, uh, those bills are squared up, but that doesn't stop the planning board from making a recommendation at this point in time. So I just want to put that on the record, that the commission should wait.
Okay, would someone like to make a motion?
Uh, yes, Rebecca Griffith, uh, motion to grant preliminary approval and recommend final approval to the subj- subdivision plan at sixty-two Cedar Boulevard conditioned upon the developer addressing the items required to be completed to be, to final approval noted in the engineer's review letter dated April twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three, and, uh, additional comments by Ian regarding the, uh, engineering piece.
David George, I second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion carries? Okay, the following two agenda items both pertain to the Black Oak Project. Discussion of the agenda items him can occur together with separate motions made for the subdivision plan and the land development plan. We request for preliminary approval for a subdivision plan. DeSiga, DeSiga LLC is requesting to subdivide the property at thir- three ninety-seven Old Gilkerson Road into twelve parcels. This would accommodate the Black Oak Land Development Plan submitted by DeSiga LLC to construct ten single-family attached homes on the property. Am I saying that right? DeSiga, okay. Siga, thank you. Our second item is a request for preliminary approval for a land development plan. DeSiga LLC has submitted the Black Oak Hill Plan to construct ten single-family attached homes on approximately two point seven acres located at three ninety-seven Old Gilkerson Road in the R three zoning district. Single-family attached dwelling units are, are used by right in the R three zoning district. Uh, we have a presentation for the developer?
Good evening. My name is Chris Peters. I'm with MDM, uh, here this evening, uh, representing DeSiga for the application before you. With me this evening is Matt Dearson with Midland Architects. He is, uh, the eng- or the architect of record. I do have available this evening, uh, plans to put on the display board, unless you would prefer to have them on a whiteboard or the, um...
I think we can do the display board, because we have a camera that can point to you from, to show the Zoom folks or...
Uh, so the plans that we've presented, uh, to you uh, do include, uh, both of the development plans as well as the subdivision. Uh, the property in question is, uh, yeah, number, uh, three ninety-seven Old Gilkerson Road. It is property that is functionally sandwiched between, uh, Old Gilkerson and Gilkerson Road and just about across the street, I believe, from the... Okay. Um, bottom of the plan sheet is Gilkerson Road. The intersection of Gilkerson and Cedar is down at the bottom corner of the plan. And Old Gilkerson Road is at the top of the property, uh, as, as grade goes from Gilkerson. Our proposal is to, and there are currently two houses on that, these properties. And the property does extend to both sides of Gilkerson with Pendot right-of-way, uh, bisecting the property. Our proposal is to remove one of the existing homes, keep one of the existing homes, and provide ten new single-family attached homes on the remaining portion of the property. We will have, um, a residual piece of property across Gilkerson Road here that is functionally undevelopable. But we're using the, um, flat and open area of this property, uh, that is in between this existing house remain and the joint property along Old Gilkerson Road. From a site planning perspective, the site is going to be, and currently has, um, one driveway accessing Old Gilkerson Road and it has a, a governor's driveway that operates off of Gilkerson. For this proposed development, we are going to keep this existing home. We're going to do, expand uh, that existing driveway along Old Gilkerson Road. And we're going to provide a new ingress and egress along Gilkerson Road. That application is before Pendot right now for those, those new driveways.
And I believe there was a scoping meeting with your traffic engineer, the municipal traffic engineer in Pendot to discuss those driveways, but the conclusions haven't been issued by Pendot yet.
Uh, the conclusions from Pendot, no, uh, they're, the comments from Pendot, though, were taken, uh, in good faith and planned adjustments were made to address the comments provided to us verbally at the meeting. Uh, and their primary concerns, not a, want to misrepresent, uh, or speak for Pendot, but Pendot's primary concern with this wasn't necessarily the traffic. The traffic is sixty trips, sixty-two trips a day. It's, it's, it's not really, um, impactful. But their concern was actually people making ill-advised driving decisions along Gilkerson Road to, uh, make an easy access into either of these new driveways, uh, functionally in an illegal manner or unsafe manner. And we did make design changes already to accommodate those, uh, comments as well as the addition of some addition, uh, some signage along Gilkerson Road to discourage people from making those ill-advised movements.
If there's that limited traffic, why do you even need the egress on the far western side of this site?
Um, not that one, but that one, yeah. Uh, for the ease and convenience of the participant, of the, the residents.
Have these plans been updated with those Pendot comments? Are we looking at the latest plans or is there something different that you?
These plans represent the verbal comments provided at the scoping meeting. Our application went into Pendot, I believe, two weeks ago. I would expect comments back from them in the next two weeks, and then we will make additional, uh, revisions to address their concerns along Gilkerson Road.
So I'm assuming, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but the next application that the planning board sees for this project would include the adjustments made based on the Pendot.
Depending on timing of the Pendot comment.
Okay.
Um, if we do get them back, uh, timely and if they are not, um, drastic, I would like to get the plans revised and back to you promptly on receipt. If they do have more substantive comments or, uh, things that require design change, it might take some additional time. Like based on our initial conversations with them, I do not anticipate major design changes coming from Pendot in future. With respect to the engineer, I'm sorry.
You'll structure some agreement so that all property owners would have complete access over all of those lot lines?
Yes, sir. That will be, uh, a requirement for the site plan to function. Um, folks coming in, making the, the right turn in here, uh, to access their homes anywhere through here will traverse all of this lot. As part of this development and to support the additional impervious area that we're adding, we do also have a stormwater management system underneath that driveway. So I touch on one of the points from the, the comment letter, um, some articles by a deck of homeowners association function. It is going to be necessary not only to, uh, maintain the stormwater facilities, but also to maintain that driveway.
Closest that driveway to the corner of the house.
Down here?
Yeah.
Maybe two feet, it's tight.
So how would a Amazon delivery work with isn't a traffic flow? Uh, we're at one of the middle homes. How are you anticipating that, that deliveries are made to these homes?
The easiest way for the, uh, a delivery vehicle to access, that would probably be from Gilkerson Road to make that right turn in. That's relatively flat and a grade. Make the delivery to the home and then to return back to, um, Gilkerson Road using that egress drive. Um, again, it's, it's, I, I believe about eight or nine percent grade. So fair and navigable for a, a car or a small van or truck.
Well, except the address would be Old Gilkerson Road, correct?
The address would be Old Gilkerson Road, and we do need to figure out addressing of the properties as we go.
Because that is a requirement about it being visible from the street, but it doesn't appear there's any actual access from Old Gilkerson Road down to the properties.
We do have that, uh, shared driveway along Old Gilkerson.
But there's not individual, that's through that property owner at the end's property that would be signed down there when it needs to be signed on the individual properties.
Okay.
So if I'm doing a DoorDash to, um, um, one of the middle properties, you know, I'm confused as to how I deliver my food to what is the front door.
Fair point. Uh, we may need to add, um, numbers or descriptions to both sides of the...
When there's no indication of any sidewalk or pathway to get from Old Gilkerson to the front door.
That is true. The grade in there is, you know, prohibited.
Right.
Yeah, so this is kind of a unique situation of the development that we discussed with the planning staff as we started out. Basically, because it's more or less a through lot, we can elect to call one side or the other front or back. Effectively, because it will have its address on Old Gilkerson, because that's the side that the immediate owners will see most prominently, that is the front. Um, but in reality, deliveries, individuals, vehicles, they'll arrive at the rear, which is Old Gilkerson. So I as, expect with DoorDash or Amazon, there'll be a learning curve associated with getting to the back of that space. But yeah, effectively, the grade is so steep off of Old Gilkerson that if, if an individual owner wanted to elect to put a walk up to Old Gilkerson, they could. Uh, the plan is not to put those in place at the moment. I don't know if that helps or...
So, and I think, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Am I allowed to put a chicken coop in my front yard, Ian?
Chicken coop, trying, there's...
Their, their front yard then becomes essentially functioning as a backyard.
Right, um...
Any of the features that are only committed in a backyard are out of the front yard set. We have laid out the site so that nothing that occurs and could require a front yard setback is, is not part of this front yard. Effectively, the front of the houses will look and act like the front of the house. It will simply not be accessible to people because of the size which is actually not at odds with the other houses in the past street.
Wouldn't it make more sense to make the front of Gilkerson side those, just so you could have a backyard, like John's saying? Like you could have a whatever, like you, you're really limiting the residents there, like you have a shed, you can't, can't do anything back there, really. Fences.
Part of the lot that is in that setback is just not going to work. It comes, we're going to have an area that we level out, but as soon as you get what would affect the center front setback, just slow. So it's going to function and you can occupy it as a backyard, but there's no risk of that.
But they can't put a, they can't put their stuff back there by...
No, I understand, but you can't, you know what I mean? If there's a great patio that's within the built footprint, that's going to be, one of the, so, I'm saying that there really isn't, because of the nature of the shared drive facing Gilkerson, there's no opportunity for an individual yard at what would be the rear.
Is it going to create a zoning variance influx for people? There are zoning appeals when people are wanting there.
You're showing fences here, you can't have those.
There are fences at the rear.
The front yard.
The front yard hasn't listed that there are fences.
Plans that we do have privacy fences.
Yeah. Those have been deleted.
They're still on the simple.
They are on the drawing.
They were, they were depicted as ending at the front yard setback, which would be permissible. But the developer elected not to do the privacy.
Is that right, Ian? Or could they not be past the building line?
Past the building line.
The building, the building itself.
Building line defined in the zoning code would be end of the front yard, I believe.
I thought it was like the front of the building.
No, I, that's how it is in the zoning code. I believe your definition seems to suggest that the building line extends to the end of the front yard setback. I may be wrong, but I was, you'd be very close if you're building, you're going to.
So speaking of that slope in the front, I didn't see any spot elevations on any of the, what appears to be window wells. And some of them look quite deep. I also did not see any yard drains or anything associated with collecting that water that's coming down that steep slope in the front. Can you address how the water is being collected and diverted?
We, we inverted the, the grading here. We have that steep slope coming down and we're providing gentle grade across all of those lots. The yard drain that's down here on this, at this end unit. So basically all of these yards will, will drain down to this drain here before they go around the buildings to join the detention system.
Some of the window wells though look quite deep. Is there drains associated with those?
That is something that we need to coordinate from a roof drain, you know, the roof drains and any drains in the window wells.
Those, those window wells would be appropriate. On that steep side, the grading does create a way where they want to, because they are able to dress or, or the dogs from behind the house.
Are they large enough to meet the, I mean, it's a building that's up on that, are they large enough to meet the egress requirements, so clear opening?
Being, as I said, as I correctly am having steps at the property.
So is the site plan going to be updated to reflect those, the lowest portion of those, to show those? The spot elevations inside those window wells and the drains?
Sure.
Yep. Front yard is defined as the space between the building line and the front lot line.
I thought, what's the building line? That was where I was surprised.
The building line is, I'll tell you in a second. Building line is a line parallel to the lot line. Distance measured perpendicular from there is prescribed in the chapter for required yard. Or there is no required yard, the lot line should be the building line. So it's, it's, yes, since you're showing a twenty-five foot setback. But we still say no fences in front yards. So I think we're better off overall just not having the fences on the Gilkison side. Yeah. So I think we're, we're better off just not having them in that side. And it does say that on through lots, which yours is, you're allowed to have fences in the rear yard up to a certain point. So on the Gilkison roadside, even though that's where your driveway is, if there was a need for fencing there, you could be permitted to have some.
Which would do, would have some privacy.
It's still related by your apartment.
Yeah.
Are there any details provided not to ensure that it is amongst the fencing requirements?
I'd provide details with this plan set. My expectation was it would be a, what we typically see would be a white vinyl sided site type fence. So we can provide details for.
Yeah, I think they should provide.
Yeah.
So, um, tell me more about these variances. You're looking for design modifications on your cover sheets specifically regarding the sidewalk that you're requesting an exception for.
The sidewalk, and, and that's specific to the old Gilkison Road fronted. It's very steep there off the, the back edge of the curb, just Old Gilkison.
You're saying the minimum on Gilkison though is six feet and you're asking to only replace it with a three foot?
There is one point down at the, closer to the Cedar Boulevard and where the existing sidewalk down here, because of the slope, is about three feet wide. And we would continue that three foot width through the, the steep slope area to maintain the connectivity to, to Cedar Boulevard. And as soon as the slope allows, we would taper that out to what we're showing on the, this current plan. I believe reflects PennDOT requirement of a five-foot wide sidewalk through PennDOT's right of way.
And you're also asking for a modification on the shade trees?
The, and again, to touch on the, the steep slope along Old Gilkison Road and the, the earlier presentation, even with respect to the public works facility. To put those trees within the right of way, in some cases, the plan popped into the pavement. As well as functionally very difficult because there is a gas line to get behind that steep slope, existing trees in there. So for a good portion of this, we would like to locate it as close to the right of way as we functionally can above the, the retaining wall that runs through the property. I do see opportunity for a couple of these where we can take another look at squeezing them in between, into the right of way where we do have a little bit more room. But for the bulk of the shade trees that we proposed, again, we have a lot of impairments in there that preclude putting the trees in and having them function long-term. Yes, sir.
What condition is that in?
Fair. And when we take our utilities through there, it will be suboptimal in some cases. I didn't want to make that decision for the developer as to the condition of the wall and what they want to do with it. Whether or not that wall remains intact isn't going to functionally impact the site itself.
Functioning as a retaining?
It is. Once the utility runs, go through there, it, it may pick itself out, if you will, ju- just through the construction process. But again, I didn't want to make that decision for the developer when a good portion of it is functional.
Looks like it's three feet max, maybe?
Yeah, it's not, it's not a substantial structure.
So some of your, your grading, specifically off to the right side, it does appear to be in the five-foot side yard?
Yes, yes, it does. We can pull that, taper that back to get out of that five-foot setback. And that does also lead to one of the engineer comments with respect to the steep slope area shown under the, what is the patio? Or would be a deck off of that of the unit there. The grading plans that we're showing are functionally rough grading plans to get the units constructed. And what a future homeowner may choose to install there in terms of a patio space or a deck space. And would leave that treatment to them in the future when they build the unit.
And the air conditioners are placed then in the front yard?
They are placed in the front yard and we did look at that, got it.
No, no, I was just saying, they are, and they are in that area that we, this is the possibility of the building line. It is.
The wood, wood screen, correct?
Yes.
Didn't look like there was much rain or screening.
It did a little snub in that. That is sort of an ongoing cost to the land.
So I didn't notice any dimensions on the elevation height, the total height of the building.
So I received the, the initial response in this week. And I had put together the whole seven to five narrative, modified it a bit. Ian said that you guys don't particularly accept things night up. I have all those answers. If you want to, I'll do that. If you want me to hand you a copy of it, I'll do that.
Typically what we do is, you know, the, what's reviewed by the engineers and municipal staff and given to the planning board is the documents that are submitted in advance of the application deadline. Then anything that's produced after that wouldn't be accepted then until the next planning board meeting because it would have missed the deadline for this meeting. So that's our typical process for everything, which was what I relayed to Matt and Chris today. So I know they've done it. I would say, keeping with our typical procedures of not accepting thing, accepting new things at the meeting that haven't been reviewed by engineer staff or the board in advance of the meeting. The best thing would be for them to just submit that with their next package for the next planning board meeting and we'll review it in advance of that meeting.
Yeah, it seems like there's enough on that engineering letter and some of the things we've talked about that there's going to need to be modifications made before we consider it.
To the question on the high ground, the highest, the highest, I did certainly want to put on the recorder.
Did I hear correctly a comment that you made that the individual homeowner might have an option in the purchase of this to add a deck?
One of the things that, and I apologize, we've been working on this project, I think, almost for a few years now. There have been a lot of considerations made for all of the units. And I believe the patio is where we are with.
Well, so I can speak to that. It's not, it's not that clear cut. The, the material that was submitted, the architectural material does depict that one, two, three, four units have small uncovered porches for decks on the front. One, two, three, four, five, six, I said four, so six have uncovered stoopties. So it's a small porch area, more or less, combined with a small porch. It, it's a combination of sort of the moves we're making in plan, but also some of the rate. And in reading the zoning code, I believe that there is no conclusion of what we depicted in there. There is, there is a section in the zoning code that talks about porches under a single story. They do not define a porch as having, so as near as I can tell, these are porches under a single story.
And that's, that's accurate. Cause like right now, when you have, I know theirs is different because of where their front lot line is and, and you know, where the building sits. But on a, if you think about typical Mount Lebanon street, the zoning code is set up so that essentially you can stand on the street and look straight down the row of houses and that everything has an identical setback. You are allowed to project out into that front yard setback with a front stoop or covered porch or things like that. So there are some houses that do have those slight projections. Some of them are covered, some of them are uncovered. So that is a condition that exists around the community.
Yeah, and I'd like to know more about the materiality of those as well. Same with the, I noticed you did list the different types of materials, but I didn't see anything listed on the roofing material. General on the roofing material.
I can provide more information on that because that's again, for the law.
And are you envisioning the, the baton and the siding to be a uniform color throughout the assembly? Or are you going to alternate it between units?
It's a good question. Because of the way that we chose this step, we don't always have an exact formula. Have you given that something? We have a number of different things. I think that within reason, we're planning to vary the color at places that are logical. So for example, along Gilkison, the baton runs all cover two units, sort of one third and two thirds. The, the, I, I would, I, I don't think that it makes sense to vary the color of the interior. I think we do the full color there, it makes sense. The reality is, these are fee simple, it's already a lot, so someone could obviously.
He did to that point.
They could. It's not going to be a choice when someone goes to buy one of those.
That is the intent. There may be some variability, but the, the way that the developer intends to build and sell that. The intention is, I think, that they're going to frame them all, I'm speaking on very bad kind of a throw. But the intention is that they're going to, they're not trying to do it in terms, they're going to do it once, but look to do a lot of the, and sell the. So I think that the intent is that they're going to offer a, a palette of options. That may I say to the individual locations there.
Question, I know the, it's just on what you said with the model unit. Are, are they going to have sort of full walls in between each of them then? Or is it just going to be like a narrow party wall? Cause if you're just constructing one unit as a sample.
No, no, no. They're, they're entirely drywall sided, finished one unit. With the intention that has that, that statement down the line.
Okay, so it's sort of like a custom design build? Okay. Okay. Gotcha.
That's my understanding currently.
Just trying to wrap my head around that.
Tie that the whole way, except for the one unit.
But that would affect the subdivision as well too, right?
Um, not if they, I mean, the, well, and typically what we recommend, but I mean, they can do it how they want. You know, since these are going to be fee simple lots, I think as long as they're in a good place where their foundations are going to be, we can do the subdivision. We do, and you can just consider this on your end. We do allow for multiple structures, multiple primary structures to exist on an R-three zoned lot. And you are an R-three zoned lot. So if you wanted to, you could wait on doing your subdivision plan until you actually pour the foundations of your buildings. So, you know, let's just say, okay, you're, you're building to the far right is five feet off the property line. Now maybe you're like, wait, we can't grade within five feet. We need to move that all by a foot and everything shifts over by a foot. Now all of a sudden you've got property lines that are in someone's living room. The option is available to you because of the R-three stipulation that you can have multiple primary structures. You could do the land development plan first for your foundations and then come back to us and do the subdivision plan and say, hey, here's where we poured our foundations. Now we know where our party walls are going to be. We want to subdivide this lot so that we can sell each one as a fee simple unit. So that's a consideration. You can do it all like this now. You know, and when the plan gets final approval and the commission signs it and Allegheny County records the subdivision plan, then, you know, you start construction afterwards. You never know what might happen when you start construction. But you know, you have both options available to you because of the zoning of the site.
That was the previous application, what we were doing for that. As they came through years ago before they had built the units, now they're subdividing to do fronts.
Yeah, I think from having talked to the contractor, it sounded like that model of putting that they, they have to defer to them. So it didn't make sense after you did that.
I, I would offer our surveyor for other clients, residential clients in Allegheny County does actually file the subdivision and then comes back and surveys the foundations and revises that subdivision and refiles. I don't have a preference. I do understand, I, I understand the comment in the letter and where that's coming from. And I believe our client would like to follow that.
Okay, yeah. If there is an amendment to the subdivision after the second survey is done, that would have to come back through our process too. So that's some additional cost for the developer to consider. One other note on the subdivision, I know it's in the engineer's letter too. The property on the far side of Gilkison Road has a small sliver that's actually located in Upper St. Clair. So I talked with Upper St. Clair's planning office and they said, if you can just add an approval clause to the subdivision plan for Upper St. Clair to sign off on it, they said, you don't have, and I'm speaking for them. So you can confirm with them, but from what their municipal planner told me, he said. But from what their municipal planner told me, he said, you don't need to go in front of their planning board for approval because you're not doing anything in the Upper St. Clair portion. Um, but just because part of the property is located there, they just want to have a acknowledgement sign off that, yes, they've seen it administratively and are aware that this is happening. So, um, yeah, he said just with a a clause on the subdivision plan. And you can put a similar clause on the land development plan. Just so that they're can acknowledge their awareness, but you don't have to go through two approval processes.
Should we wait until we're further along here, close to your approval?
I mean, they're they're aware that the project is before us tonight because I talked to them last week. So, um, you know, I think you can just add the clause to the plan and then, you know, we don't sign plans until the commission grants final approval. So it would just be another, you know, we would sign it, give it back to you. You could run it down to their office, get them to sign it and then have all your people sign it and take it down to the county to record.
I believe we touched on the comments in the engineering letter that I wanted to speak with you about this evening. Is there anything else that you, any other questions that you'd have to make at this time?
Gosh, did you have a letter that you want to read into the record?
So I have a letter here uh dated April thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Um, I'm gonna read down through and touch on more of the higher level points we want to to get across. So this is a single family attached dwellings, which is a use parite in the district. In regards to section B, um, we're requesting an narrative in accordance with section seven oh five and as well as some of the height dimensions on the elevations, which we discussed earlier. Part eight, uh, section C of the letter, we're uh requesting details of any fencing that's proposed beyond the plan. Section D, uh, the majority of the comments on here are drafting in nature. Um, there's some notes that need to be added to the plan, uh, things of that of that nature. Moving on to section E, we have some comments on uh the sanitary connections, how those connections are gonna be made. There's also a manhole that needs to be added at the the, uh, I guess it would be the southeastern property line, I believe, at the end of that run, the sanitary run. Section F, um, showing a fire hydrant location on the plan and coordinating that with the fire department. Um, and calling attention to the shade trees and the modification would be required for those. Section G, um, providing turning movements for uh turning on the old Gilkison Road just to confirm that there's no improvements required for old Gilkison. Into the grading uh comments, we had um comments relative to adding additional detail and uh cut fills for the plans. We have a question on uh relative to the site plan versus the geotechnical recommendations, um, which is comment four of the grading. And we understand that the geotechnical reports uh recommending uh grouting of the mine. Um, so recommending that the site plan get coordinated with the geotechnical professional. And we're just looking for clarification on how that's going to be handled, if that's going to be um proposed on this project or not. Section I, stormwater management. Um, we reviewed the stormwater management. They're proposing an infiltration facility on site. Our comments are generally planned cleanup in nature and just some added detail. One thing I would like to call out is inlet two and three, if you can take a look at adjusting those locations for future operation and maintenance of the sanitary system. It's within ten feet of that system.
I was thinking more of the operation on the driveway, trying to keep it out of the the travel path that I understand.
Yeah. And then the towards the tail end of the stormwater comments are just some additional notes on the plan relative to signature blocks and operations and maintenance. Um, as mentioned earlier, uh, from a traffic standpoint, um, there was a scoping meeting that was held. Pendot and uh our traffic engineer both agree that their concern was illegal turns in and out of the of the development. But ultimately, it's gonna be Pendot's decision and whether or not that access will be granted on to Gilkison Road. Um, remaining comments are general in nature, um, calling out needs for various permits. Aside from that, that's that's the summary of the letter.
Thank you. Uh, garbage, comment, question about garbage, how's that gonna be handled? Where's that?
Uh, I would expect that's handled in the same way that um I would see the Amazon deliveries coming in off of Gilkison Road and and coming through the site and dropping back down to Gilkison. Um, or to come out and um exit onto old Gilkison.
What about cans? You ask for inside or? In the garage or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So one of the comments was about the fire hydrants. Where do you anticipate um the fire access to be? It's off of old Gilkison to the front?
Uh, we did start our um conversation with the fire department just this afternoon. And I do expect, I I will let them uh guide and put it wherever, they can have it wherever they want that. So um, that'll show up on a next uh plan set that's provided to you as well.
Cause given that it's, you know, the the bottom axis is kind of a one way in off of old Gilkison, it seems that that might be challenging on the backside.
It it is. Uh, I I would offer access that right in off of uh Gilkison for an emergency vehicle is is probably easier for them uh than to run down old Gilkison to make that access. So I, again, I would expect that works the same way with the deliveries or uh maybe a trash pickup.
Um, visitor parking.
So behind each of the two bar garages, there is maintenance on the top of that.
Is there gonna be stripe like for fire lane, like what you're saying, like there is a fire and then somebody parks along Gilkison there?
I don't know what is customary for what's essential for a garage. I mean, it's not like the, uh, I don't know in a sense that people have fire. I mean, obviously, there will be a cooperative publicity of of that care space. But we've designed it in such a way that there's a fairly generous two-way travel lane. Uh, that's stipulated by code that a park bar would be clear of. I mean, we could park it or we could do a change material. You know, give ownership to that area in a way that's intelligible. I think part of the reason, I mean, and I know it's all, it feels like a very backwards kind of house configuration, but like if you go out there and walk that site of old Gilkison, everybody, people, all of us, it's about that. To the neighbors and to the people who are trying to reach these houses because it's very narrow. It's very steep and it is kind of unincluding on this area. So our thinking was the more we can lessen the impact on the existing neighbors and provide that access and 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 exiting directly on the Gilkison. It's not a wild west though, but we've been trying to apply certain bystanders to the nine houses and the letting to other people.
Any further comments? Any public comments?
Who has a comment, you can raise your hand. Seeing none?
Someone like to make a motion?
Um, this is Rebecca Griffith. I'm going to uh motion to table the preliminary approval of the subdivision plan of three nine seven old Gilkison Road to provide the developer time to address the items noted in the engineer's review letter dated April twelfth, twenty twenty-three and additional comments from the planning board this evening.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. And the motion is tabled.
Uh, so Rebecca Griffith, I'm gonna make a motion to table the preliminary approval to the old, the Black Oak Hill Land Development Plan at three ninety-seven old Gilkison Road to give the developer time to address the items noted in the engineer's review letter dated April twelfth, twenty twenty-three and the comments from the planning board tonight, including the removal of the front yard fence fences, uh submission of the building materials, illustration of house numbering and uh screening of the AC units in the front yard.
This is Andrew George. I second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. If the motion is tabled. Okay. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to our fourth agenda item, which is our com- comprehensive plan update. The discussion of the comprehensive plan update and the municipal planner will provide an update on the progress.
Yes, thank you. Uh, so in advance of tonight's meeting, the planning board had an opportunity to hear an update from our consultants uh on the progress of the plan. We have three uh s- topic specific surveys that are currently out there. They'll run through the end of April. Um, they're all available on the project website, ascendlebo.com. So we encourage uh board members, members of the public and anyone else to uh take the surveys, share the website with their friends, family, relatives. Uh, because the more input we get, the better. Um, right now, the purpose of these surveys, we're kind of drilling deeper into some ideas we've heard through our previous surveys, um, and through our focus groups and things like that, uh, throughout the investigative portion of the process. Um, that we are trying to really test out, um, you know, community attitudes, whether people like dislike certain things that we heard, um, you know, throughout the initial survey. So we have some more detailed questions on some of those things. So there are three surveys available um through the end of this month and we're uh looking forward to good input and then continued uh comp plan activities throughout the summer. We are on progress uh for meeting our goal of uh adopting a final plan by the end of this year.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to citizen comments. Hey, Mr. Good?
Paul Good, nine oh nine Old Hickory Road. I, looking at the questions on the uh survey, who comes up with those questions and how are they shaped? Can you tell me?
Sure. Yes, so um, the bulk of the survey questions um were done by our professional consultants in consultation with municipal staff. Um, so as I mentioned, some of them came out of, you know, things we heard from previous surveys. Um, so one example is we heard a lot of people in previous surveys say they would like a dog park. Um, so one of the questions in one of the surveys now kind of digs deeper into, okay, you know, where specifically would you like a dog park? And how do people feel about dog parks in certain areas of the community? Um, some of them came out of comments we heard from our focus groups that we've had, um, through other public engagement. Our consultants were out at various community events last year, um, talking to a lot of people, getting feedback. So um, that's the genesis of the ideas is the uh comments and input we've received already. And then um through our professional consulting team at Passion MTR, um, plus municipal staff, uh, we kind of hone those topics in on, you know, what do we want to find out more about?
And the focus groups have been selected or not?
Yes.
And who selected?
The focus groups were um selected. They contain members of uh municipal boards and authorities. They contain members from uh certain community organizations and certain, I'll say at large, community members with specific areas of interest.
Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
You're welcome. Are there any other comments? Anybody online? I guess not. Okay. Okay, well, uh, then our next meeting, our next regularly scheduled meeting of the Mount Lebanon Planning Board is Tuesday, May sixteenth, twenty twenty-three at seven P M. All municipal meetings now have a Zoom webinar component to enable residents to attend meetings either virtually or in person. Do you have the motion to adjourn?
Don't short so moved.
Rebecca Griffith, I second.
All in favor? Aye. We're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
It's not a primary day.